There it is. I'll be. Time flies when you have time. Well, spring is made in order. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible, with every deed and justice for all.
Mayor Chris Patrick's here.
Yep.
Alderman Morris here.
Yes.
Alderman Gibson's here.
Yep.
Alderman. Vardman's here.
Yeah.
And Alderman Myers here.
Yeah.
Um, the minutes from the last meeting. I will read over for approval. Um, we called the meeting to order at six thirty-one PM. We did the pledge of allegiance. We did roll call. Everybody was, um, here. The new city clerk, which is me, was sworn in. The motion was by Nate, second by Joel. Uh, change in moor bed, uh, check to Clinton. Motion by Joel, second by Ashley. Nate's abstained from the vote. Mandatory trash for all residents ordinance to be presented to the board on August fifth meeting for approval. Motion by Nate, second by Ashley. Request for qualification for engineering services. Scoring for both bids from Snyder Associates and Allstate Consultants. Snyder Associates got a score of ninety-five while Allstate Consultants got a score of eight. Snyder and Associates won the bid. Shawna will be in contact with the city on the next step, which is to apply for the grant that could pay up to forty thousand dollars. Uh, motion to close the meeting at seven thirty was made by Nate, second by Joel. Motion to open the meeting was made at seven forty. Uh, by Ashley, second by Joel, and we adjourn at seven forty-one PM.
Hear the motion?
I make a motion to approve.
So there's no minutes on the last part to close the party?
One minute?
You want to hear a second?
Why are there no minutes?
They're in this part.
When they're closing the meeting.
We turn out the protocols.
All in favor?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, let me hear it.
Basically where, where they came, I told them about the bids. They're gonna be coming and about the next step, they said that they could. They're gonna look into seeing what we're in need of. And then they will work. Once we get the grant and everything, put the money and figure out what, what we're desperate need of and where we can go and what we can get with the grant money.
And this will be brought up at the November election, correct?
When are we to find out about the grant?
Oh, the grants, oh.
No, it's not on, not on the grant. I'm sorry if I misunderstood you there, but that's on the levy.
Levy?
Yeah, levy. We'll be at the vote November.
Right, okay.
So as far as the grant. Yeah. Yeah, but as far as the grant, we are still in limbo on that. You gain more say about the levy?
No.
First report.
And in the general fund, we have twenty-six thousand, forty dollars and fifty-nine cents. In the water reserve account, we have two thousand, seven dollars and six cents. Water maintenance account, we have three thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty cents. In the sewer bond account, we have three dollars. Sewer maintenance account, we have seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. Trash, we have, um, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty cents. The light account, we have forty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirteen cents. And the street account, we have ten thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-eight cents. The USD restrictive reserve bond, we have sixteen thousand, eight hundred, thirty-six dollars and fifty cents. And in the city hall, we have nine hundred and sixty dollars for a total of seventy-two thousand, five hundred and four dollars and fifty-five cents.
Hold on, that total again? Sorry.
Seventy, okay, seventy-two thousand, five hundred and four dollars and fifty-five cents.
Thank you.
I missed, uh, what was the first to, the twenty-six thousand, whatever?
The twenty-six, the general fund has twenty-six thousand, forty dollars and fifty-nine cents. And the water reserve account has two thousand, seven dollars and six cents.
Okay, and there was another water account after that?
Water maintenance account has three thousand, one hundred, thirty-eight dollars and forty cents.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is the sewers has three dollars?
Yeah, but that, because now when we do the checks, the bills, I have it, so the money is going into the correct bank account that it's supposed to be going into. You'll be signing the checks.
Right.
To transfer funds, so that there won't be that after today. But as of right now, that's what's in there.
I just kinda curious.
Yeah, I know.
The reason.
I know, I have something good for people. I don't know how I was gonna pay for it, you know?
Now, after today, once the checks get deposited, the money's going, the correct money's going out of the general fund into the accounts that, that should be going into.
And the account that she's talking about is electronically just withdrawing every month. Right. USD, so. Right. You know, it's six hundred and forty-seven dollars, which goes out, that's probably three dollars left in there for the six hundred and fifty dollars in pot. Okay.
Any more for the budget?
Sure.
Okay. Um, our budget for the, for the town for the year. Um, our expenditures are utility franchise fees, the streets, property tax. Or, excuse me, not our expenditures, our income. Utility franchise fees, the streets, tax, the property tax, personal property tax, trash, sewer maintenance, sewer usage, water maintenance and water usage. And all those together for a grand total of one hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred, seventy-one dollars and twenty-four cents for the year. Our expense, expenses are, for the office, we have our payroll, our insurance, our equipment, supplies, postage, newspaper, attorney fees. Those come to a total of sixteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars for the year.
Now, this is proposed budget?
Yeah.
Okay, and it's January to December instead of July to June? Fiscal year was?
Oh.
July to June?
It would be, I can fix that. You were, I totally messed that up.
The, the top, so the top is labeled wrong?
Right, it is. I'll fix that.
It is June, July, that's just correct.
July to June, yeah.
Um, our transportation expenditures are, um, gas and fuel, insurance, repairs, and that's a total for the year of two thousand, four hundred dollars. Our maintenance expenses for the year include mowing, tools, M.O., one cop, and that's a total of one thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars for the year. And then we have our city expenditures, which is trash, lights, streets, water, sewer. And that comes up to a total of sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. So there's a grand total of our expenditures for the year is eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. So if you subtract our income from our expenditures, that leaves us with, uh, revenue of seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-six cents.
And regardless whether we were showing this January to the December instead of, uh, June to July, it would still balance out the same.
Yes, July, July, June.
Yeah.
Uh, what, what was the difference? You said eleven thousand, seventy-seven thousand?
Oh, seven.
Seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-six cents.
So that's pretty much where our balance is annually, you know, pretty close to that. Until after the end of the month, then we pay our bills and then it re-upped every month. Pretty invited. If you understand that.
Thank you for getting that done, Julie.
You're welcome.
Really appreciate that. We've been waiting some time. That's wonderful.
Okay. Any old thing?
No. What are you going over about trash?
Uh, yeah, you can.
Are we gonna do a motion on the budget?
Um, it, I mean, it's pretty much self-explanatory.
Okay.
You wanna work it? I don't, I don't. Does the board, do you? Do I have a motion to approve the budget? I, I don't believe that we even need it, but, uh.
I'll take it.
A second?
Second. All in favor?
Yep.
Yes. Solid waste garbage and litter or things. For the purpose of this chapter, the following terms shall be deemed to have meaning indicated below. Volk rubbish is non-perishable solid waste consisting of combustible and/or non-combustible waste materials from dwelling units, commercial, industrial, institution, or agricultural establishments, which are either too large or too heavy to be safely and communally loaded into solid waste transportation vehicles by solid waste collectors with the equipment available there. The city is the city of Westboro, Missouri. Collection is removable of solid waste from its place of storage to the transportation vehicle. Contractor, such person, firm, or corporation, corporation as may be contracted with to provide solid waste transportation and disposal for the city. The city shall provide for the collection of solid waste as follows. Collection of residential solid waste, the city shall provide for the collection of residential solid waste in the city, provided however that the city may provide the collection services by contracting with a person, county, or other city, or a combination thereof for the entire city, or portions thereof as deemed to be in the best interest of the city. It shall be the responsibility of the occupants of each dwelling unit to prepare a package and deliver solid waste to curbside for collection as prescribed in this chapter as it is, as it may be amended from time to time. All residents are required to use city contracted solid waste provider and will be billed for the monthly ser, the service monthly. The board may classify certain waste as hazardous waste which will require special handling, shall be disposed of only in a manner acceptable to the board, which will, which will meet all local, state, federal regulations. The city clerk or such other city official who is responsible for preparing utility or other services charge billing for the city is hereby authorized to make and promulgate reasonable and necessary rules and regulations for the bill and collection of solid waste collection and or disposal service charge as hereinafter provided for subject to the approval of the board. A copy of any and all rules and regulations made and promulgated under the provision herefore shall be filed, filed in the office of the city clerk of the city. It is unlawful for any person to interfere in any manner with solid waste collection and transportation equipment or with solid waste collectors in the lawful performance of their duty as such, whether such equipment or collector shall be those of the city, those of a solid waste collection agency operating under contract with the city, or a duly licensed collector. Burning solid waste unless an approved incinerator is provided or unless a variance has been obtained from the appropriate air pollution control agency. Deposit solid waste in any solid waste container other than his or her own with the intent on avoiding payment of service charges hereinafter provided for solid waste collection and disposal.
Yeah, Julie, it's tough right there. I, I will waive the other two readings. I see no sense of you reading it three times. There's only a small public here. Anybody that would like to have a copy of it will be more than welcome to get a copy of it.
I agree.
What do you mean? It's supposed to be read three times?
Yeah, it, it should be read three times, but anybody that don't understand, we got a very small audience here. Anybody that would like to have a copy of it.
I'll make a motion just to do it one time.
So I ask for a motion to go ahead and pass the ordinance.
I second it.
I second it.
To? All in favor?
Yep.
Agree.
I have kind of a question. What's on this black rubbish? Whatever it's called, or bulky rubbish, I guess, what's that?
Well, it'd be like brush or something, you know, that, uh, trash trap.
Or if you put your couch out front for them to pick up.
Yeah, you know.
So what about, what about the burning? You know, a lot of people around town burn and it says.
But they have to do it.
Well, just like, we had somebody that was burning TVs and stuff like that, you know? You have to have a proper incinerator or, you know, uh, you have to add.
The wood about, just brush.
Well, you know.
Like that big fire down on my, my corner? I mean, that was like a mountain.
But even, even at that, that's a lot different than somebody burning a TV right beside your house. You know, what I'm saying? And, and if you read right down to it, it's just a matter of, uh, burning solid waste unless approved by incinerator is provided unless variables have been obtained from an appropriate air pollution control agency, so.
So you don't need that for final brush?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Here we go. Well. As far as the mayor's report, I'm just gonna skip that for right now. I'm going to, uh, any public comments out there? Any public comments? Okay. Well, it's going to the Alderments. Joel, I'm gonna start with you. You got anything to say about first?
Nothing yet.
Okay. Are you happy with the way it's been mowed and maintained? Everything looking good?
Well, yeah, but, um, I guess I have to say I wasn't happy about the picnic table, 'cause I had a committee ready to help me with that. I guess, we paid Talon to do it, and I had two people along here to help.
Oh.
Anyway, it's done.
Did, did Talon get it painted?
No.
Huh?
No.
So.
Uh, what I saw was red, white, and blue over there.
Oh, well, it's been that way for a long time, so you got a committee.
I got a committee, yes.
We, we have not paid Talon to paint it, and I have not instructed him to. You know, if you all would like to do that.
And we may change, we may change the, um, some other stuff.
Yeah, that, that, that's fine. You're in charge of that, just, you know, nothing's going to be expensive.
Do we, does anybody know if there's anything set to be, um, like a music thing there where they're gonna need speakers and on the, uh?
They're gonna be having some.
Lion's Club.
Lion's Club will be next month.
Next month?
Yes, I believe it's the fifteenth. I'd have to look it up again.
Do they, um, it's October, usually, maybe it was.
It could be September.
It's pretty September this year.
Carol, you probably know with Lord Zephyr, do they use the gazebo?
Lord Zephyr doesn't, but, uh, Lion's Club will.
Yeah.
Cause they'll have a fan usually.
Okay.
But now, I know that Chris Johnson said something that maybe, she said, "What a for sure thing", but her son might build some benches in the gazebo.
Who said that?
Uh, Chris Jones's son.
Yes, yes, I talked to her about that.
But I don't know when or.
Yes, because she also said, "We don't really have room in there."
Yeah, no, they're gonna be sold and they'll over, they're gonna be able to be taken in and out.
They'll have to be removable if they're inside. If they're outside, but we were wondering about maybe even getting the speakers up. But I don't know how much room is up in the roof of that. What about?
They're getting more about vandalizing, if you're talking about these, so. I don't think we need to speak freedom.
No, I don't need, I was thinking.
I think it would be nice if we could have it up here without my character involved, I think.
Yeah. I'm not down here to see all that.
Anything else you want?
No, that's all.
Uh, Joel?
Uh, Washington Street needs to get the east side bladed and see how much some asphalt will cost.
Okay. Um, we can have Julie, uh.
Washington is in front of Sharon.
Pardon?
Where is Washington?
Washington's one going by the elevator.
Yeah.
And he's right, uh, east side of that is Washington out right back.
So we're gonna put asphalt instead of ground?
No, 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 we should talk about getting a lot of asphalt for passion. Street Hall, you know, getting investment on.
Arm and chain every day so I can stop at, uh, either T Meyer's and Astana.
No, we are not going to T Meyer.
Or I can stop at, uh, Southwest Iowa, parking lot paving.
We will get.
See what they say.
We will get several estimates, but we will not go to T Meyer, not after the way they did it last night.
What's that?
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, I'll, I can stop.
They told us one price and then they turned it around and charged a devil with what they said.
Well, I can, I can just stop to Southwest and see what they say.
Well, get it in writing.
Yes.
Well, yeah.
Get it in writing.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Joel?
No.
Okay. Nate?
Um, I'd like to change, just getting some spraying and mowing did and, sewer's good. They had the smoke test on. Had a few leaks. We're looking into that.
Got most new fix, haven't we?
I believe so. We need to get a little bit more rock up there, um, top of Monroe around that, uh, manhole.
I stopped still.
Oh, there are Francis, there's a Mark's.
Marks, or the, that big boulding, the Wildcats.
People kept grabbing them, right?
They just kept, they kept packing it down, so I think we need to get a little more rock up there.
On the sinkhole?
Yeah.
Joel, maybe you ought to, uh, call for a motion on, uh, getting a load of rock in. Well, I'll call for a load of rock in.
I'll call.
Stockpile and ask for a vote, you know, motion.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
A load of rock?
Yes, a load, one load of rock, bring it for stockpiles so we can fix that up there by Princeton and other little places. I got a motion down here, a second?
Is that okay?
All in favor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who said second? Joel?
And what I will do is I will get a hold of, uh, Don Whitehill, myself. He is the best one that ever gives the best deal. He only charges sixty-five dollars for bringing a load of rock and we can charge it at the rock quarry and then we don't have to pay no sales tax or anything. So.
Other than that, I think we're good.
I have a question. You had said there was like five infractions with the sewer. Are those all, you sent me a thing about the sign. That was one of them.
Yeah.
Is everything else?
And we need a sign out there at the lagoon, saying where it's gonna be, where the discharge is or the.
It's, it's there.
We already ordered that.
It's placed.
I, I guess I didn't see it the last time I was up there, so.
And then they wanted the rear prep, uh, sprayed more often and they wanted, uh, wanted to mow more often, you know?
Well, the outside, it does still need to mow.
More often than once a week?
I know, I know.
Once a month.
And, you know, we're gonna.
Out at the outside.
We're gonna be able to, you know, take care of a lot of the problems that they're asking us to fix. But we ain't gonna be able to fix every little problem. It's just like the water tower, you know? We can fix while we can, but we cannot afford to have somebody to mow outside or around the lagoon. You know, it's that, they're just gonna have to understand, you know, the reason that David's so upset that day is because they had to drive through weeds and couldn't find the discharge. Out there, but they don't find the discharge right off, they wouldn't have said nothing about it. However, you know, next time we know that they're coming, if we have to, we go out there and mow them a path to the discharge.
Right.
But, you know,
It's what I was thinking, it's cold.
Paying another two, three hundred dollars or more a month to be mowing around the outside of that. Carol, um,
Senterman.
Senterman is supposed to be mowing it for grass, for, for hay, but, you know, it's gotta get so tall or else it's not feasible for her to even go out there. It's not worth placing her fuel, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I had never been out there before, ever, until yesterday, and the driveway that goes up to the gate, aren't we supposed to be mowing that? That looked horrible. I mean, the weeds were as high as a table practically.
Not the driveway.
Well, it looked pretty high to me.
I was just.
Even spray that driveway, Nate?
Is that on gravel?
Spray that.
It looked bad to me. I've never been there, so I don't know what it looks like when it looks good, but it looked bad.
Spray that, okay? Okay. All right. Are you done, Nate? Ashley?
Um, everything's been going pretty good with the water. Um, we flushed out the fire hydrants. Um, we installed a shut-off valve at the agri-service water meter. Um, so now we will be able to clean here more often. That's basically all I have. Everything's been good.
That's gonna be a big plus having that shut-off valve down there at the agri-service too. We'll be able to shut that off without having to shut off half the town in order to clean that out.
Is that to be installed?
No, it's already been installed.
Oh, it's been installed?
Yeah. The city do it itself, me and Talon and, uh, his entire contract. It costed us seventy dollars. Okay. Let's pay the bills. Okay, um, maybe.
No, I didn't pay enough.
Yes, yes. Now, just in case y'all wondered, um, we're gonna go ahead and give Julie her full six hundred, even knowing that she started that tonight of this month. She has been bustin' ass, coming over and spittin' her gas and everything else come to Westboro, so.
I make a motion to pay her.
Pay her six hundred, is that what you said?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Second? All in favor?
Yeah.
Right, these top ones are mostly transfer.
And there's something I want you to read there, too. That's a couple of accounts that I've, and please don't take me wrong. It's just the end of past. I've, I've been worried about them, so I wanna make sure.
You don't have to worry about that. It's got a little more power than the one you just.
Okay, good, good.
And you'll see that, that there.
And you know the trash balance, cause, um.
And the trash has all that going into it.
Okay, good.
Do you have it on the, the paper for the mowings?
Yes.
Where you, I can't remember how it all stayed.
Right, you want it bigger or something?
A little bit bigger.
Like wider?
If we take, instead of going this way on the paper, take the paper and go up and make the paper, the space a spot a little bigger?
Oh, bigger to write inside of it or something?
Right. And don't put, don't put, mow it, just put mow and then they can put park.
Okay.
Maintenance shed.
Where they, they, gotcha.
That way, it's, it's just mow, then you can write where they, where they mowed it and when they do it and spray and all that.
All right, I'll do that.
And, I'm not.
No, no, whatever you guys want.
Well, I, I'd just like to see it that way, just for the simple fact, we're not having to go, everything's documented.
Right, right.
It's just mowed and then you write city.
Where you mowed.
Park.
And then where you sprayed.
And, and so, yeah.
All right, yep, I can do that for you.
And we can put like, same streets or lagoon, you know, water tower.
Julie, we probably, we have to do a separate sheet for the DNR, just because we don't.
No, you could probably still use the same one.
Okay, okay.
And you notice on the back end, you can choose what it is and what's going on.
Who's Amanda Earth?
Legacy. She, you're my neighbor.
She needs some money for your, that's why she's sitting here.
I think that's why I got the laser eyes. Do you miss me?
No, not at all. Thanks for the welcome home.
Oh, Julie, there we need documents on when I spray, when I spray, I got my.
Okay. All right, cool, thank you.
I do have those. If you want my old, I'll do it to you later.
No, it's all right. Just so I can keep ahead on what I need to do. Where it needs to go. I'm sure it's a very good job.
We got a file thing here if you wanna talk. But I guess it's your file.
It's my file.
Is this the one that we put down, down around the branches? It's gravel paper.
Yeah, see what I'm doing? It's going back into the street and handling out in general, but I can see, see, I told him it was going back in that street. Yeah, it's not being paid out, nobody. It's just.
No, no, Julie, no. Julie took it out, everything was done, yeah.
And I hope they don't show that with that. You want to check it?
Same thing with the bonds.
Yeah, exactly. And you do that, I mean, they're not saying that.
To come down and tell them.
Yeah, yeah. And a patient will wonder why it is here so high, because you add all that, uh, governors.
All right, oh, yeah.
And you add all that.
Uh, we've got a little problem.
We're trying to check that, um.
Yeah, it's in there, trust me.
Fire truck repairs, yeah, I went to fire, had to repair B and B services.
I can write them out if you want.
Yeah. B and, B and B services is for the, uh, altitude valve or pressure valve.
So, what should come out of?
Um, it should come out of, uh, water, water maintenance.
Which, that's one I don't have. The trucks force, you know, we do it on the.
Yeah, you read it out there, we catch for it around later.
Sorry about that.
It'll be, it'll happen.
I should call, I thought that's what that was.
What is wrong with you?
I know, I'm sorry. Oh, thank you, sir. See, now you're trying to be nice.
When I want to. Yeah.
You know what that's about?
Uh-uh.
Well, our, uh, doors down there, they look like.
Both on?
Yes. They're hanging up. Oh, well, I've got, I've got a key up for Joel, and you're welcome to have one.
I think I might need one.
Well, that'd be great, because even if, uh, somebody else ain't around and you let all you in there, we should ever, um.
We should do it.
Or blow.
Oh.
Yeah, and you're welcome, go in there and check out anything, anytime.
Well, I know you had one, you said you had.
Yes, I have, but just remind me of it and I'll give you any time.
You want, or you wanna mail it to JJ or you wanna take it to him?
Uh, it really doesn't matter.
It don't matter to me neither.
So, and what's your way to get to him, or to find me, um?
I already got the stamp in the envelope filled out, so.
All right.
We're not gonna always send.
That's, that's what's gonna happen then, so.
I'm like on top of this.
We appreciate that.
Hope you're getting very confused.
Did I send it some that way?
Oh, yeah, B and B services. They're a little bit extra this month, I don't know why.
It was because they, um, they did testing in May. Lab testing is what it said on.
Yeah, it says May lab testing.
I know, they're around doing.
My way service, um, five hundred and.
Yeah. Yeah, they find you a room in five hundred.
You just take one finger.
So, it's five hundred a month?
Yeah.
And Jerry, what did you say the B and B was for?
Um, for, I think our water towers, for our, he takes care of our altitude valve and our pressure regulator.
Track was saved or worn, sorry, we just dropped it back.
Kinda itemizes what he does, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
That'd be better for everybody to get to see kinda what he's getting made from.
That's mine.
And we got a ledger up on files, they were showing it, so.
Well, I would never do. And just well, um.
And then whenever Talon's come back, just hand it over here and I'll give it.
I'll do that.
I doubt, we got a, they don't want us from, uh, that or on the fire truck damage.
No, sir.
I think they had, uh, what'd they have to actually do there? I know it said something about a valve, I know the overings were junk.
Yeah, I don't know.
I know the guy was talking something about maybe having to replace a valve or something.
We've got a lot of bills tonight.
Yeah.
Well, don't forget Joel, because we're transferring money into the current accounts now, that that makes for a lot more checks.
Yeah, some of the checks are going from one account.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, that makes for a lot more checks in the beginning.
This is B and B for the water tower. The altitude replacement.
Yeah. I got you.
I figured you'd do it. Uh, just give us your.
Won't be able to yell at me next meeting.
Oh, I'm not yelling. I ain't yelling, ma'am.
Okay, sir.
That's why you wear them, that's why I don't forgot mine.
Can you do all that? I'll come back.
What is this rock, stone, gas?
That's a counter we got at Shannon Dog.
Oh.
After filling up the fire truck and, uh, getting gas and diesel lot and up there, have to get it paid.
Sure.
And I've noticed that, uh, you never went over and got a tank of fuel.
No, I probably not.
Okay, well, that's your, that's your problem, that, you know, I just feel, you know, what I tend to do and that, you know.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I feel like I'm a little bit out here, I know I'm gonna have to go do things.
Okay.
I think about Mary Jo walking all over everywhere to do everything she had to do. She had to walk.
Okay, one thing I do wanna bring up to y'all is, uh, you can go out and look in the back of my pickup. And I bought me a new pickup, not for the use of the city, but for my own personal use. I offered to sell my old pickup to the city and where Joe was on board, he was totally against it. I have over fifteen hundred dollars of just the motor alone. I've had over another thousand dollars of repairs done today. And Joel was willing to sell it to the city for a thousand dollars, however, that seemed to create a little bit of trouble with some people, so I figure we'll just bring it up to the board and let the board decide that, uh, I did not buy my new pickup to make it a city pickup. And if you look in the back of it right now, it's got none of the city tools in there and I've put lots of miles on it and I.
I'd like to say we have to do the same with the back of our pickup.
And the same with Nate, so, you know, we definitely, definitely need a vehicle for around the city to haul stuff. I mean, unless somebody wants to volunteer their vehicle to come down and haul our wrenches and stuff around.
I make a motion that we get a vehicle for city use.
I second it.
And now, I'm gonna give you all options, you know. If the city would like to purchase the vehicle for a thousand dollars, it's well, well worth it. If the city doesn't want to purchase a vehicle for a thousand dollars, I'm more than happy to pay, buy and pay for myself, but I will want a hundred dollars a month for the use of my pickup. So, you know, you all decide which is the best, now, you know. Of course, we have to have it insured and it's gonna cost gas, but what doesn't cost gas and what doesn't have to be insured, you know? So.
So, who's gonna pay the gas?
Well, the city's gonna have to pay the gas. Why should the gas not be paid by the city if it's being used for the city?
Well, something else here that we were talking about is when you want to patch the streets, you might even have the old trailer to go along the back of the truck to patch the streets, because we have nothing to patch the streets with.
Yes, and for a thousand dollars.
We can look into that.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that goes along with.
Our pickup is in natural condition.
I know you wouldn't use it for a car.
And we had to scratch up the bed of our pickup from putting tools in, and I said, "No more," and so then that's where he started putting tools in the back of his pickup and he scratched his all up. You know, it wasn't that we had a building pickups, but.
I just don't appreciate using my pickup for that. That's not what I bought it for. And, you know, like I say, I'm willing to go ahead and purchase the pickup myself and rent it to the city, but I will want it rented to the city at a hundred dollars a month plus the gas. And I will pay for my own insurance.
What do other, like, cities in the county, do they have a vehicle?
Oh, yeah, they're like.
Right, well, that's one, Elmo, that's one.
I thought they just tried them for reading those new meters, that was the only.
I don't know.
No, every city has several vehicles. And.
The fact that you know it has a new motor and you know it's a good running truck, I think that shows for something, too.
Well, I think the smartest thing for the city would be to purchase it, however, I will leave it up to the board because I'm kinda in the middle of, I've already paid six hundred dollars down on it, just because I think it's a well worth buying, I'm gonna buy it if the city doesn't buy it. And Joel, it's still in his name, so, and if he wants to, he can say he sold it to me and I will abstain from it or he can abstain from it, but, you know. It don't matter to me, I'll buy it and I'll rent it to the city for a hundred dollars a month plus gas, you know, that's, that's by me. Or you can purchase it and it will be here for the city and stay in the city shop down there and be used for the city purposes only.
I think it'd be dumb if you sit there and pay, you know, that someone twelve hundred bucks a month, we can buy it for twelve hundred bucks a month, or twelve hundred dollars and have it done getting over with.
But is it gonna be used every month?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it'll be there every day. Oh, yeah.
But is it used a hundred dollars worth?
Well, you're gonna sit there and pay someone a hundred dollars a month just to have it sit there or?
If we buy it outright, it wouldn't cost a hundred dollars a month for it. And that's where I think personally that it would save the city is if we did buy it outright. Just like I say, for the last couple of years, plus, we use our personal vehicles, whether they're fair or not, you know, and that's not really fair to us. And this is something we've addressed before. And it, it, we've never taken care of it and so for years on, we continue to use our personal vehicles that have gotten torn up. You know, like I say, if I had an old pickup pickup, I wouldn't care. But if you go look at the back of the bed of our truck, there's a brand new lighter. I don't appreciate getting old dirty tools thrown in there. And I don't know a city that doesn't have a vehicle, so.
Hardly that, or, uh, two thousand eight and Palau.
Okay, so we discussed this back and forth, we had the face on it, now I wanna hear a motion on it.
I make a motion to buy. I make a motion to buy the truck.
I hear a second.
I already did it first, so she did the second.
Yeah, the nice second.
Okay. Purchase, all in favor?
Not many.
Okay.
And is it mandatory that we rent your vehicle? I mean.
It's, it's, it's going to be mandatory unless you wanna put out your vehicle and it's, it's it.
Why is, why is it mandatory that we?
Well, you have to carry a lot of tools in your SUV.
We're probably gonna walk around with the tools, we need a vehicle.
I'm sure you wouldn't like those dirty tools in your SUV as much as we don't want in our vehicle.
Maybe we should just get a trailer and put the tools in the trailer and keep them in the.
And what, hook it onto your vehicle?
That's fine. I don't use them, I mean, you, you guys have.
Well, you do, you do, we need a vehicle. It's already.